Welcome everyone to today's city council meeting today, Monday, October 13th. I now call this meeting to order. Can we get a roll call, please?
District one, Councilmember Casey.
Present.
District two, Councilmember Viera.
Present.
District three, Councilmember Otero.
Here.
District four, Vice Mayor Martinez, absent. Mayor Lopez.
Here. We're going to start with an invocation by Patrick Davis from the Sirius Christian Church. And he is on Zoom and then followed by the pledge of allegiance. Santiago Macias will be doing the pledge of allegiance from Casper Elementary. So let's please stand first before we do the pledge of allegiance. Is he online?
I am.
Welcome.
Thank you. Let's pray. Our heavenly Father, we are grateful to be here this evening. Thank you for the hard work and the sacrifice of every member here. Give us great wisdom tonight and peace as we do your good work in this great city. In Jesus' name, amen.
Our young man, you ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, council, we have two presentations. One is the National Respiratory Care Week, and we have nobody accepting that proclamation. And we also have National 4H Week proclamation. So if we can all, please go to the front here. Thank you, everyone. We are recognizing October 19th through the 25th, 2025 as Respiratory Care Week. Respiratory Care Week became nationally recognized in 1982 when President Ronald Reagan signed a proclamation declaring the third week in October as National Respiratory Care Week. And whereas National Respiratory Care Week purpose is to bring awareness to the importance of respiratory care. And whereas respiratory care practitioners are the health professionals best suited to provide, monitor, adjust, and document mechanical ventilators air. And whereas respiratory care practitioners use their experience to work in pulmonary function labs, sleep labs, and life bite services. Whereas respiratory care professionals are an integral part of our medical care system. Now therefore, be it resolved, I Javier Lopez, Mayor of the City of Series, on behalf of the city council, Vice Mayor Daniel A. Martinez, Councilmember James Casey, Rosalinda L. Viera, and Serena Otero do hereby proclaim October 19th, 25, excuse me, October 19th through the 25th of 2025 as Respiratory Care Week. Congratulations. And before we take our photo, I just wanted to thank my wife. She's actually a respiratory therapist, and I also thank all the respiratory therapists that are out there. Thank you.
This week, we're also recognizing October 5th through October 11th, 2025 as, I'm so sorry. Come on up. So we're recognizing National 4H Week. Whereas this year's National 4H Week theme, Beyond Ready, reminds us that 4H is building a ready generation in a world of change and equips young people with skills for the future while meeting them where they are today. And whereas 4H is America's largest youth development organization supporting 6 million youth across the country, become engaged, successful, and independent. And whereas 4H programs are delivered by the Cooperative Extension System, a community of more than 100 public Lane Grant Colleges and Universities across the nation that provides experiences for young people to learn by doing and 4H. And whereas 4H connects young people and adults to their communities, preparing them for work and life through experiential and inquiry-based learning while providing emerging research for positive youth development. And whereas expanding from its strong agricultural roots, 4H helps young people explore the world around them and grow into productive adults. Now therefore, be it resolved, I Serena Otero, Councilmember District Three of the City of Series, on behalf of the city council, Mayor Javier Lopez, Vice Mayor Daniel A. Martinez, Councilmembers James Casey and Rosalinda L. Viera do hereby proclaim October 5th through October 11th, 2025 as National 4H Week.
I'm very grateful for this proclamation. It's really glad that 4H is being recognized, especially since it's very important to all of the youth that it supports. 4H is all about building a community, leadership, and helping them grow into self-sustainable adults that can, um, sorry, incorporate themselves into the real world and are ready to, problem solving and other things adults need to do in their entire lives. And as someone who has been part of 4H for a good amount of time, I'm so happy to say that it's working. It works. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for your patience. We have two presentations today. And we will start with the first presentation, which is the Modesto Fire Department presentation. Assistant Fire Chief Andrew Hunter will be giving this presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and members of the public for being here tonight. The purpose of this presentation is to speak a little bit about the area that Series Fire Department covered within Series and to share a little bit more information. And some of that may be new to some people. And so as you can see from this slide, Series Fire Department or the area that it serves covers more than just the city of Series. It covers the Series Fire Protection District as well as Industrial Fire Protection District. Series Fire Protection District illustrated by the red area on the map is encompassed by approximately four square miles of unincorporated land located southeast of Series with a very small portion along the Twalomee River. The population within the district is fewer than 2,000 residents. Most of the district lies within the city's sphere of influence or SOI. The district was established in 1930 and is governed by a two-member board. It does not own or operate any facilities or infrastructure. Historically, the City of Series Fire Department provided all the fire protection services to the district. The district has fewer than 300 calls per year. As properties are annexed into the City of Series, they are simultaneously detached from the district. The next anticipated annexation will take place when 535 acres of the district will be annexed into the city as part of the Copper Trails Development. There's also the Industrial Fire Protection District illustrated by the gray area towards the top of the map. Industrial Fire Protection District is located between the City of Series and Modesto and consists primarily of developed land. It was formed in 1950, and the district covers approximately three square miles and has a population just under 13,000 residents. Its entire area falls within the sphere of influence of both Modesto and Series. In 2007, the district entered into a joint powers agreement with the City of Modesto and the City of Series to form the Modesto Series Fire Protection Agency. This agreement allows each city to provide fire services within their respective sphere of influence while sharing revenue collected by the district. Under this agreement, Modesto operates the fire station on Imperial Avenue or Fire Station 10, while Series operates the fire station on Pecos Avenue. So in total, the City of Series is 9.5 square miles with a population of 49,300 people. It has three staffed fire stations and one unstaffed station that is used for, as a training center. In 2024, there were 5,947 calls for service, including 4,589 EMS calls, 406 fire calls, of which there were 55 working structure fires. The current full-service contract with Modesto Fire Department was approved by Series City Council in June of 2021. At the time, Chief Boto was serving as interim fire chief. It was during this time that there was an opportunity to build upon the resource-sharing partnership between Turlock Fire Department and Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District and the City of Modesto. This partnership created efficiencies and approved the services provided to the community. The current contract will expire in June of 2026. Prior to the contract, Series had, Fire Department had three staffed fire stations, stations with two fire engines and a ladder truck and a battalion chief for a total of 11 firefighters on duty every day. With this, with the contract with Modesto, we have 26 staffed fire stations, 24 staffed fire engines, four staffed ladder trucks, five battalion chiefs, one fire investigator, one EMS captain with additional equipment that is cross-staffed or a total of 94 firefighters that are immediately available to respond to calls for service. This means that as additional calls for service come in, resources can move to ensure that there's the best possible coverage throughout the system. All these personnel work under the same policies and procedures. They train together, respond to calls together, and have operational alignment as if they were one fire department. The full-service contract provides a greater depth of firefighters and an increased level of service. The contract provides paramedic firefighters providing advanced life support to the community. Series benefits from technical rescue and hazmat teams. Prior to the contract, Series would have to use in-house mechanics or send engines off to various vendors for service. This would create extended turnaround times. And now with the contract, Modesto Fleet Services provides the regular maintenance of fire apparatus. Some of the benefits are reduced downtimes of fire apparatus. Their fleet facility is open 19 hours a day, seven days a week. They have the ability to make field repairs, and we have certified mechanics that can work on fire equipment. In the area of EMS, 77% of the calls that take place in the Series service area are medical in nature. Having a dedicated emergency medical service division provides an enhanced service to the Fire Department and the community. Modesto Fire Department has an EMS division made up of six personnel overseen by a paramedic deputy chief and assisted by an EMS quality improvement coordinator who is a registered nurse. The division also includes three paramedic fire captains assigned on shift that can respond to more complex medical calls like multi-casualty incidents, victim entrapments with extended extrication times, structure fires, hazardous materials calls, among others. They assist with providing patient care and assisting with coordinating patient care between the ambulance companies and the receiving hospital. The quality improvement coordinator nurse provides clinical quality improvement by reviewing calls for compliance and making recommendations for improvement if needed. The division is also supported by an administrative assistant. The EMS division provides quarterly training to ensure that our firefighters receive ongoing training and maintain compliance with the local emergency medical service agency. We also have a fire prevention division that provides fire prevention and community risk reduction. This includes a staff of eight, including inspectors and administrative staff. This assists with regional fire marshal coordination with the goal of aligning the fire code in all communities we serve. It will create consistency for contractors that work in our areas and allow for fire inspectors to work more efficiently in each of our communities. Series also benefits from the Stanislaus County Fire Investigation Unit that has fire investigators that can assist with fire origin and cause determination. Series also benefits from a dedicated training division that is overseen by a deputy fire chief that includes five assigned personnel with additional subject matter instructors assisting as needed. The training division provides initial firefighter training through the MST Firefighter Academy. New firefighters hired with the department attend a 16-week MST Firefighter Academy training alongside firefighters from Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District and Turlock Fire Department. Our firefighters are trained in the 19 MST Operational Policies. These policies enhance firefighter safety by ensuring consistent use of safety practices and providing for a standard operational protocol. They improve efficiency and effectiveness by providing clear roles and responsibilities for responding units. Policies form the basis for our crews to train to and allow for clear benchmarks for success and skill mastery. Common policies ensure legal and regulatory compliance and meeting National Fire Protection Association standards, insurance service officer rating expectations, and compliance with Cal-OSHA regulations. The division also provides the promotional testing for the various ranks. We have multiple training sites, including Station 17, the training facility, the Turlock Training Facility, and the Regional Fire Training Center at Modesto Junior College. The most significant benefit of the contract with the City of Series is the improved service delivery in day-to-day calls through enhanced operational alignment. This ensures that all 24 fire engines, four ladder trucks, five battalion chiefs, and the EMS captain and fire investigator that are on duty function as one cohesive fire department. They train using the 19 common fire ground procedures. When deficiencies are recognized in either training or on calls for service, corrective action is taken to improve performance. This level of operational alignment was not achieved under previous resource-sharing agreements, either automatic aid or mutual aid. This alignment provides an enhanced response to 911 calls over the previous agreements. It ensures there's better documentation, greater compliance with best practices, including NFPA and Cal-OSHA. This contributes to an increase in firefighter safety and the public, a reduction in liability, and a level of service to Series and the community that it could not achieve on this own. This operational alignment has also contributed to measurable improvements in the City of Series Fire Protection Rating. During the term of the Modesto Fire Department contract, the city's Insurance Service Office Rating, or ISO Rating, improved from a Class III city to a Class II, reflecting a stronger fire suppression capabilities, enhanced training, improvements in water supply and dispatch system. So for example, today, when there is a fire in the City of Series, working structure fire at a residence, there'll be five fire engines, one ladder truck, two battalion chiefs, one EMS captain, and a fire investigator that can respond to a call. At a commercial working structure fire, that increases to six engines, two trucks, two battalion chiefs, one EMS captain, and one fire investigator. This meets NFPA 17 recommendations of 17 personnel on a residential fire. If the units are not needed on scene, they are immediately available for station coverage. So for example, going back to our map, if there's a fire within the City of Series, all of those units will adjust and move in to make sure that there's adequate coverage. Oftentimes, I guess I should say, when, just because a fire call comes in where we commit resources to, it doesn't mean that other calls for service stop. Through the MST relationship, those resources will realign and ensure that there's the best possible coverage for the community. So our next steps are to bring to council or to work with the city manager to bring to council a contract. And are there any questions?
Council, do we have any questions? Go ahead, Serena, if you don't have any.
I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you for the presentation. I think it's helpful for our residents to see what the contract is like and how it currently is benefiting them. So thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Vera.
Thank you. I don't remember if you had mentioned or not. How many did we have when we had our own station compared? Because I believe you said you needed an average of 18 currently on a house fire, and I know we had a couple of house fires last week.
Yeah, so prior to the contract or just within the City of Series, there would have been 11 firefighters on duty. And so that means all of those resources would have been committed to the fire, and there would have needed to be additional resources to respond to the call to meet NFPA expectations. And then on top of that, there would be the need for additional resources to respond to those additional calls for service. It's not uncommon for there to be a structure fire, a second structure fire or a potential structure fire or an EMS call taking place all at the same time.
And then one last one. I don't know if you remember, the one we had on Hatch Road. I think we had significantly more resources than.
Absolutely. We've had numerous fires within the City of Series response area that have exceeded the City of Series on its own to be able to handle multi-alarm fires, if you will. That's including the recycling plant. We had a hazmat incident at one of our local businesses that occupied a significant number of resources. We had the pallet fire, and we've had multiple large fires. Earlier during the summer, we had a vegetation fire that spread into multiple backyards within the city where we had multiple resources on scene. And the benefit of this relationship is that we have sufficient staffing that we can adjust resources to ensure that when that second and third and fourth call come in, that there are resources available to respond.
Is that the one, I believe you came across the car accident responding to the scene and addressed that, right? And then reallocated resources? Is that what?
Yeah.
Car crash? I know, I was kind of.
Yeah, we had a, I was assisting to the call and came across the vehicle accident that took place at the same time of that, and that was back in July, I believe.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Casey, do you have any comments or questions? Thank you very much for the presentation. It's been a huge difference having this contract with MST. And I can truly appreciate all the hard work that you and your department has done. So I support this contract, and I also support all the men and women that work really hard every single day to keep us protected. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We will move on to citizens' communications. Well, I'm sorry, what was that? Is there one more presentation? Let me go. Oh, yes, that's correct. So is Nathan here? Nathan, how you doing, sir? You're going to give us a presentation on Pacific Gas and Electric.
Absolutely. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, Doug, and team here in Series. I'm going to hand off this proclamation for 4H Week. I'm going to make sure it gets in the right hands. I am Nathan Alonso. I am your local government affairs representative for Pacific Gas and Electric. Wonderful getting to be here with you this evening and just going over a couple of updates. Then we'll talk about our upcoming general rate case, and then if there's any questions, I'd love to answer them. But more than anything, I started covering Series and the county of Stanislaw for the company a couple of months ago and have finally been able to make my way here to this wonderful community to say hello, put a face to a name, and hopefully begin our collaborative relationship in the years ahead. It would help if I clicked on. There we go. So we usually start off presentations with a safety message at PG&E. I think with the weather being what it is outside, or at least since I got here, it's windy, it's raining, and being that this is the first real wind and real rain of the season, making sure that our tires are where they should be and that we are swapping off our seasonal wiper blades so that we are ready to take on the road, we are ready to take on whatever it throws at us. So I think it would be insincere to say that we don't recognize the significant challenge that affordability, the significant challenge and affordability issue that rates have on customers on the residential gas and then also the electric front. Because of that, we have done a number of different things at PG&E. We decreased costs and expenditures and found a way to save or have cost savings of almost $1 billion over the course of the last two years. We have found ways to sunset third-party contracts. We have found ways to go back to the commission and say that certain programs are either needing to be reformed or are in need to be dropped off of residential customer bills. So last year, we saw a reduction in residential customer rates. This year, at the beginning of the year, we saw a reduction again. We're hoping to have another one before the end of the year. So in our general rate case, which is the way that the utility is funded, for the first time in 15 years, we didn't go and ask for an increase at the CPUC. I think that a lot of our customers, especially on the electric front, breathe sigh of relief. And we hope that this is only the beginning of a really earnest effort to begin to bring bills down on the electric and gas front. So some of the programs that we have for our gas and electric customers are CARE and FIRA. So residents that meet a certain income threshold, which every year it's looked at. So we're able to take in a larger segment of customers and help provide them with, you know, some notable savings on their residential customer bills. The CARE and the FIRA programs help give folks between an 18 and 20% discount on their monthly bill. And then LIHEAP, which is a federally funded program that we also collaborate with a number of community organizations, that helps folks who have fallen behind on their bill catch up, and it gives them pretty much a grant of $1,000 to help get their bill back to zero. So those are the financial, the financial front to help give folks the proactive savings, and then if they fall behind, catch them up. But on the proactive front, before bills become a problem, we have the ability to do a budget billing program with our customers. We also, through our Go Green and Home Energy Checkup, send members of the PG&E team to a customer's home so that they can do an energy audit and figure out, you know, where am I using the most amount of gas? What appliances need to be updated? If I meet a certain income threshold, will PG&E help me get in touch with a community organization that can maybe help me replace this appliance at no cost? So those are just some of the things that we do in order to, one, help customers and make sure that they're being both safe and efficient with their energy usage on the gas and electric front. So we know that different customers have different needs. So in order to help meet those needs, especially during times of extreme heat, and then we're coming on times of significant winter, we provide disability disaster access and resources. So if folks have, for example, an access or a functional need like the need for oxygen or the need to keep their home at a certain temperature because a member of the household has a qualified medical issue, we will. uh, we will uh, subscribe them to a number of our programs that can, one, uh, make sure that they are notified if a project of ours is ever going to impact uh, gas or electric service at their address. And two, uh, it allows us to enroll them in what's called medical baseline. So they are able to obtain a lower cost of uh, energy usage um, because of their qualified medical need. And then um, we know that we serve a diverse service territory. So we also want to make sure that uh, we have folks um, subscribed to uh, language services and communications from us that are best and most accessible to them. So we do that through our in-language support um, through the California Relay Service. And uh, to uh, some of our electric customers, we provide backup power um, and if they qualify for some of these uh, medical issues. So like those programs that we just talked about, medical baseline and the self-identified vulnerable program, help give a more wrapped around approach uh, to serving these customers that have um, some significant needs. And uh, we want to make sure that these customers aren't left in a lurch in case weather or projects or something else comes and disrupts their service. So some other um, resources for folks out in the general public, Safety Action Center and Reported App. I'd like to call out those two. Uh, Reported App, if you see something like, hey, there's a gas meter or a piece of equipment that I know belongs to PG&E and it's, it's looking, looking like it needs a little attention. Drop it to us on the Reported App, or if you're a member of the city council or some of the team up here. Uh, Doug can give you my cell phone number. Please don't publish it on social media. Uh, that's a, that's a, that's a quick way for me to say, please, don't do that. Um, and then the Safety Action Center uh, helps give folks some ideas and resources on how they can keep themselves safe and what to watch out for um, when it comes to natural disasters or other emergencies that may interact with your gas or electric service. So uh, in wrapping up the presentation, um, really want to reinforce the fact that over the course of the last decade, our message has been safety above all else. Uh, that continues to be the case, but also paired with that is affordability because we know that it's important to our customers and we know that we have to um, operate as a company in a way that makes us competitive. So um, you will be seeing a lot of messaging around affordability from us. You will be seeing us um, take action in a way that helps bring notable uh, and promising uh, residential uh, savings to our customers. So that is the end of my formal presentation. Um, I will also say that um, we had a very um, interesting end of session with energy package and the way the legislature wrapped up for the season. Um, the energy package did pass, which for us, especially on the electric front, was very notable because it allowed us to, us and other investor-owned utilities to renew the uh, wildfire victims fund, which hopefully would help uh, signal to the market some stabilization. Um, and then we have our general rate case, as we were alluding to earlier, in front of the CPUC. Uh, and that will be decided in the next several months. Um, so a lot happening, but I'd welcome any questions.
Thank you. Uh, council members, do we have any questions? Would you like to make a comment? Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for taking the time to be here today and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Council members? Thank you for the presentation and your time.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will now continue to citizens' communications. While the city council welcomes and encourages participation in city council meetings, adopt the rules allow no more than five minutes. Resolution 2007 106 for expression of non-agenda items. Matters under the jurisdiction of the city council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the city council from taking any action on any matter which is not on the posted agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the city council. Citizens are entitled to address city council any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. Anyone wishing to address city council must adhere to the rules decorum. The rules decorum are posted outside of the chamber doors. Do we have any of our representatives here today? And/or online? We do have Brandy, if she would like uh, in the chamber. This is for representatives. In the chamber.
Brandy, your mic is muted. Brandy, you'll need to unmute your mic.
Can you hear me okay?
Sweet kid, thank you.
Sorry, I'm pushing all kinds of buttons. Okay. Um, just wanted to go ahead and give the Series Chamber of Commerce report. Um, just wanted to let you know that we are currently in the process of working with some of our small businesses. We are working with workforce development and um, doing some surveys for businesses around Series who have had to um, apply for permits to see um, any uh, questions they might have, any issues they might have had, so we can report back to the workforce development and to our city of Series. We are also planning on doing a meeting in November for our underserved businesses. So if any of our city council or city staff know of any businesses who would like to get some support, please let us know. On October 21st, we are going to attend a multi-chamber mixer in Turlock. That will be at 5:30 from 5:30 to 7:30. And on October 28th, we will be going to a mixer for the Valley Builders Exchange that begins at 4:30 PM in Modesto. And lastly, we have a coffee and conversation scheduled at 9 AM on November 5th at Sunbelt Rentals. And we would like to invite the council, the city and the public to come and, and join us. And that's my report. Does anybody have any questions?
Doesn't look like it, but thank you, Brandy.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and start with any, we have a yellow card today. Milt, welcome, all the way from Turlock.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff and community members. Milt Treewiler, my lifetime Stanislaus County resident. The prime farmland surrounding the city of Series is a natural resource that cannot be replaced or mitigated because of its unique nature, its quality soils, its water availability and its good climate. There's no other farmland like it in this country or on this earth. There are major shortages of prime farmland and water in the world today. We now know that here in the San Joaquin County, we'll need to remove almost 1 million acres of farmland south of Stanislaus County from production because there's not enough water to irrigate it. Council members and members of the community, we have many things to be concerned about today. We have to be very careful about who we listen to and what we believe. There are people here in Stanislaus County and Series that are scheming to destroy the future for our children and our descendants. We must be strong and do the right thing and save the farmlands surrounding the city for our children and our descendants. There is an abundance of poor soils and wastelands in California and our nation for the developers to build houses on, like the Altamont Pass area or the area east of Oakdale. There's also the large landmass area west of Patterson along Interstate 5 and east of Fairfield along Highway 12 all the way to Ria Vista. We also have the entire states of Arizona, Nevada, Utah, New Mexico and Colorado for the developers to build houses on. In the city limits of Series, we must build up and not out on the city's infill areas. Building on existing infill land is the best option because the city services are already in place and ready for building. We need to build an abundance of high-rise luxury apartment complexes and high-rise luxury condominiums. We also need to build an abundance of high-rise affordable apartment complexes and high-rise affordable condominiums. We have so much potential in building, of building out and not up here in Stanislaus County and our outlying towns. There's no farmland like this in the world. The farmland in Stanislaus County is fully economically developed, producing food for our state and our nation. We must never allow this prime farmland surrounding the city of Series to be developed. Not 10 acres, not 20 acres, not 50 acres, not ever. Don't let this be developed. We need to stop it. And grow up. We are adults and parents and we have an obligation to do what's right and best for our children and descendants. We must all be good stewards. We're not a bedroom community for the Bay Area. We are the food provider for our state and our country. The prime farmland surrounding the city of Series is a natural resource that cannot be replaced. Once again, because of its quality soils, our Turlock irrigation district water and the good climate we have here, we must all be committed to saving this irreplaceable farmland for our children and our descendants. And as adults and parents, that's what our responsibility is. And I don't, I don't, maybe not everyone has children, but you have nieces and nephews. You have cousins, you have descendants. And they can't plan for themselves because they're not even born yet. If we don't plan for them, they're gonna have major food problems. It's our responsibility to do that. We can do it. It's hard work. But we can do it and it's worth the fight. We've got to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We have no more yellow cards, but is there anybody in the public that would like to make a comment?
Uh, Dave Pratt of Series. Uh, the last time I was in here, when they uh, first rolled out a new hotline for suicide prevention, um, 988 Option 1, they also have a text, 838255. Veterans are seeking help more than ever. Since its launch in 2007, the Veterans Crisis Line has gone from receiving just 20,000 calls in its first year to over 1.2 million calls in 2023. A 60-fold increase. And veterans, veterans have been for a long time because of the high rate of suicide, been more on this than the general public. But this also is good for the general public because even children wind up uh, committing suicide if they're not, if, if they're not caught in time. And there's a lot of our professions, emergency uh, that sooner or later, some of them uh, they have the same issues. It's, it's, you might say it's combat fatigue. Uh, so I just want to bring this back to allow, uh, let everybody know. Um, I know the doctors now, they're starting to ask the six-part questions. I was, when I just went to go pick up my hearing aids, uh, they want to know what your mental stability is. And they're starting to ask these questions now. So I try to, try to uh, limit the suicide rate. Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Good evening, council members. John Warren from the city of Series. I have a question. About a year ago, there was a presentation regarding a uh, grant that the city of Series was applying for and we were in line to receive. It involved $2 million for the restoration and improvement of the um, American Legion Memorial Building that the city owns. And I believe that grant was supposed to come out of the Senate. Uh, the senator up there or that particular uh, group has a certain amount of money to award grants to a local jurisdictions for the renovation of uh, of buildings such as uh, what the city owns. So I was wondering what the status of that grant is. It's been over a year and we haven't heard anything. Thank you.
It was submitted to uh, then Congressman John Duarte and it did not go through appropriations, right?
That is correct. We also resubmitted it this year and neither our congressman or our senator uh, uh, supported either one right now.
So we've submitted it now the second time and the first time it was, at least it was submitted to appropriations, correct? But the set, what happened with the second time, we submitted it to uh, our congressman and our senator, it didn't get through the, it didn't make the cut, it didn't even make the first process. So we're, we're going to continue to submit that to whomever will actually listen. So I know how important it is to you guys. Thank you. Anybody else? Anybody online?
There are no hands raised online and there were no emails received.
Thank you. And we will now close citizens' communications and we'll move on. Is there any conflicts of interest from the council? And before we go, there's no appointments either. Before we go to the consent calendar, we have pulled item number 13 and the item will not be considered. Consent calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for sp, uh, for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be acted upon by a roll call vote. Is there anyone in the council that would like to pull an item, please? I see Christmas trees. We'll go with uh, Councilwoman Vera first.
Um, I'm gonna pull nine.
Nine. And we'll go with uh, Councilwoman Otero.
Five and item number 12, please.
And Mr. Casey. And number seven. Okay, thank you very much. And I'll bring this item back for a motion. How about this? Serena, would you like to make the motion?
Yeah, I can make the motion to approve item numbers one through four. Item numbers six through eight.
Oh, not seven.
Oh, I'm sorry. Item number six. Item number eight. Item number 11 and item number.
13 has been removed.
13 has been removed. That's it.
We're looking for a second.
Did you mention item 10?
Yes, item numbers 10 and 11. So.
Second that.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Casey?
Aye.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Otero?
Yes.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Item number five.
Thank you, Mayor. So looking at the voucher list, um, I just want to clarify a few things. First off, when I review the list, um, I wanted to know if we can get a better breakdown with the um, when there's travel, for example, the hotel name, any associated cost and if the per diem is included. So I'm sure that's something the city manager would have to maybe look at with finance. Well, it's just a comment right now, but I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the city manager and the council. Um.
Just for clarification, that was hotel name and what was the other one? I'm just writing down notes. Per diem?
Per diem, yeah.
Thank you.
And then it looks like on uh, 9/24, uh, the, the dispatch services are paid to Stanislaus Regional 911 and I keep seeing it being paid to the sheriff's office. So if we can get that corrected also on the list, I think that's important. And then my next question is, under animal services, it says first quarter. Um, what was the dates of the first quarter? Do we have that? So that's just another example of, if we can have the dates on that as well.
Councilmember Serena?
Yeah.
And the dates for the first quarter would have been July 1st to September 30th.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. We'll go ahead and add those um, dates for you in the description.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then moving on to September 10th, there was the uh, Warden's Office. It said finance remodel. This one, I just need clarification because my understanding is the finance remodel was under the ARPA funding, which had to be previously obligated before 12/31/24. But the purchase was in September, which tells me this maybe came out of this year's budget. So I wanted to know what was purchased and what account was used.
This was paid out of the ARPA. It was not coming out of this year, so it was using the previous year's purchase order.
Okay.
It was carried forward.
Thank you. That is all I have.
Mr. Casey, you have a question on this item?
No, pull it.
Okay. Now we will go to the public. Any comments or questions on item number five? Seeing no hands raised. Bring this item back for motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item number five.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Hi.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Otero.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Number seven. Mr. Casey.
Sure. I would like to remove it and maybe we can take it into consideration in November. As we all know, our budget is tight and we have a lot of things going on. It might be an important meeting. It'll be our last one for the calendar year. Thank you.
Item number seven is for December twenty second, twenty twenty five. I was just making sure Doug knew. Okay. Any comments from the council? Oh, Vera, go ahead. Sorry. Yes.
No worries. I'll make sure. I love policy here. I do agree that if there's meetings that do need to be done, I don't know if, I necessarily want to do it that close to Christmas and two days after my shoulder surgery. I do have shoulder surgeries, so I won't be able to drive that week. If we move it forward, I don't know how that conflicts with planning, maybe doing the planning Monday, the Monday prior to my surgery. Because if there is business that needs to be get, or needs to be resolved, I'm a hundred percent in making sure that city business gets done and there's no delays and making sure that whatever you guys need done gets done and approved in a timely manner. So I do have shoulder surgery, like my second rotator cuff, again, on the seventeenth of December, so I will be unavailable for that week while I'm recovering.
Doug, would you like to make comment?
Yeah, so I mean, this has been going on, I mean, cancel this because of the week of Christmas and everything else. If we need to hold something, we can call a special meeting and make, get that done when, when we need to. As far as interfering with the planning commission, we're looking at reducing planning to maybe once a month. Because I figure, I think we've canceled eight council meetings, or planning commission meetings so far this year. Of, I think, sixteen, so half of them, we don't have enough to generate, so we're looking at that. So it's not going to interfere with planning.
Now, I have a question. I already know the answers to this, but just for the record for the public. How often or how long before do you plan these meetings in regards to submitting all your paperwork and staff? Is this planned out two weeks or four weeks ahead of time?
We have to have everything in a month in advance, so that everything would be in, need to be in by November twenty second.
So this is pre-planned already? So like you said, if there's anything of vital importance, you would ask for us?
In reality, our city clerk has things planned out through, I think, April of 2026.
Which is great, which is great, which I understand council members' cases concerned. And if it was very vital and important, you would have already planned it out and had it prepared, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? I'll bring this out to the public. Any members of the public like to make a comment? Seeing none. Any hands raised?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay, I'll bring this item back for approval. Motion?
I'll motion to approve item seven on the agenda.
I'll second.
Let me get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
No.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Otero.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries three one.
Thank you very much. Item number nine.
Thank you, Mayor. Just had a quick question on page one seventy of the agenda, and hopefully it hasn't changed. There was something in there that just kind of caught my attention that I didn't must have skipped over last time. It says the council may adopt a resolution reasonable fees to recover the costs associated with responses to buildings and similar structures that have excessive false alarms. Now, are we in the process of doing that? Are we looking at this in the future? What exactly, I'm just trying to figure out why that was in there and what steps we're taking to address that part of what's in that attachment that's attached to what we're trying to approve tonight for the second reading.
Who would like to answer that question?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Thank you for the question. I'll start the conversation for us. Probably to put it easiest, that's more or less boilerplate information that allows the council to say if we have excessive fire alarms, you guys can adopt a fee structure. My understanding is when Series signed the contract with Modesto for Fire Department Services, they also adopted all of Modesto's fee structures. So you actually adopted whatever the Modesto fee structure is. I do apologize. I couldn't tell you that number offhand right now. But it does allow you at any time to, to change the false alarm fee.
So we do already have technically then an ordinance and a process in the event that you guys feel you have are responding excessively to false alarms that we've already adopted. We don't need to have an ordinance in place because we're covered under the Modesto one. I'm just trying to understand the language within this ordinance.
Typically, when there is an arrangement between agencies that require the city to sign on to a different agency's rules and regulations, that would be included as part of the arrangement. We'd have to look into it just to double check that that's in place. So we can, we can bring that information in the future, but that, that can happen.
Perfect. I don't have a problem. I just wanted to know if we were being charged by fire, like are we re couponing some of those fees? Because that's going to be part of our contract that we currently have in place with fire anyways. So that's why I didn't know if we had an ordinance or not, and if we do. But if we're mirroring Modesto and that's what we're following, and we're following the same procedures, or Modesto's billing any excessive false alarms, that's, that's where I'm a little confused. Like, is Modesto billing it? Are we billing it?
I don't believe that's codified. I don't believe that's codified in the Series Municipal Code, so something that we'll work with Fire Department to get to the bottom of that and have information for you at the next meeting.
Okay. So do I need, this is a second reading, though, so that's, I'm wondering if I need to put a referral in, or is this something that's
It's a follow-up. It's a follow-up that we can provide just as an informational item for the next, the next meeting. I would say that if the council wants to evaluate or reevaluate what that process looks like, that could be a separate referral item once, once we have an answer, but not necessarily to hold up the ordinance tonight.
Perfect. I think that's what I wanted to know was the process and procedure and what steps we're doing now. Thank you.
I may just clarify, the fee is not to the City of Series. The fee is to the actual business that is having the excessive false alarms. So if you, you pick Acme Electric, I'm sorry if there's Acme Electric here. If they had what we consider excessive three false alarms within the same calendar year on the fourth alarm, then we would start billing them. And the billing is more of a process to gain compliance, to get them to change or fix their fire alarm system. We're not in the business of making money, so when we start getting false alarms, we actually go out, engage the customer, help educate them and try and get them to get a fire alarm system that is working and compliant because the alarm system that creates many false alarms creates complacency amongst responding crews. And so that's a dangerous place for everyone, including those that are in the business. So I don't know if that helps answer that question for you.
Yes, no. So are you guys doing the billing, or is that something that our staff is supposed to be doing? Where is that money going to you? Or is it, I think that's kind of where I'm
I got it, okay.
Very muddy into the regulations as to how that's worded.
Oh, wait, the city attorney then.
Perfect. Thank you.
And would you say that it gives us like flexibility? And in the case that it became excessive and there was too many fines and too many businesses were having that issue, that we could come back as a council? Is that what this really is saying?
The council can establish a process to set the excessive fine schedule in essence. In the last, if there is a situation where there isn't such a structure and you've adopted Modesto's policies and procedures, then it's really subject to what has already been set. So, but I think unless there's something specific in the agreement that prohibits the city from doing something different, then it's really up to the council to set that if you, if you wish, or to change it.
And it sounds like it's something that's reasonable, where if it's the third alarm or the fourth alarm, I think you said, they're going out and checking to make sure they were not complicit, where you just have the smoke alarm and you like, oh, that goes off all the time. And then when there's a real fire, you're thinking it's just
And typically, there's, there's a lot of discretion allowed within those kind of programs. Or if there is some extenuating circumstance of why the alarm keeps going off, there's some flexibility so that there is accommodation for the or the business owner, homeowner, or whatever.
But at the same time, if I don't, if I understand the contract correctly, we, and again, the contract hasn't come before us. But I know it kind of came up with Chief Andrew or Hunter when he spoke. Ultimately, that would be a response call that's calculated in our fee calculation on what we're paying for services, if I'm correct. When they're responding to false alarms, which ultimately generates additional costs for us. No? I'm kidding. Correct, but ultimately isn't that set amount based on response calls? It's not.
Forgive me if I'm speaking out of turn, but I don't think you're, the fee that you pay with the Modesto Fire Department is a per call fee.
I didn't. Sorry, pressing the wrong button here. My understanding is average based on what your anticipated cost would be for the coverage of Series. And so based on that coverage, if you have increased calls or call volume, that increases your workload, at least in my mind, the way I'm thinking as a business owner. That would then possibly cause increased fees because now you're responding to additional calls, even if it's not something that's realistic at this time or being realized long term, it could at some point become a realized cost in the event that you're having multiple repeated false alarms to multiple companies. Long term, I can see that increasing the overall cost because you have additional responses in the City of Series. And if we can negotiate yet another contract with additional calls, and that's kind of where I'm thinking. It makes sense. Okay. I just want to make sure because ultimately it could be realized long term, and if this was a repeated type situation of multiple businesses.
Any additional comments, council? Members of the public? No hands raised? Bring this item back for motion.
It's number nine, right? I should approve item nine.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Otero. Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Item number twelve.
Just a really quick comment for the record. I did talk to the city manager earlier. And for Sam, the thirty eight eighteen Kiwi is a residential address, so I just want to make sure that that will be updated in the contract before it's finalized.
Thanks for bringing this up, Council Otero. The, the information was pulled from Google Maps, so that's the reason why I had it listed at thirty eight eighteen, not realizing that was part of the parcel. But we'll go ahead and make that changes once we have the agreement signed.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any of the council members have any comments or questions? Going to the public? Anybody in the public? No hands raised? Bring this item back for a motion.
I'll motion to approve item number twelve.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey.
Yes.
Councilmember Vera.
Yes.
Councilmember Otero.
Yes.
Mayor Lopez.
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
It's okay. We're moving on to a public, to a public hearing, which is item number fourteen. Establishing the annual assessment levy for fiscal year 2025, 26 on the business in the downtown area defined in the Series Downtown Revitalization Area Board Annual Report for the activities and programs of the Series Downtown Area Board of Fiscal Year 2025, 2026. And this item will be presented by our Economic Development Manager, Julian.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The Series Downtown Revitalization Board and the Business Improvement District was formed in January of nineteen eighty nine to assist businesses, owners, and merchants and landowners with revitalization and promotion of downtown series. Tonight, we recommend to establish an annual levy assessment for fiscal year 2025 to 2026 on the businesses in the downtown area. The boundaries for the downtown area are reflected in Exhibit C and described in Exhibit D. The revenue generated from the assessments is to fund the maintenance, landscaping, shrubs, and lights. It will help contribute to the potential downtown facade improvement and other downtown incentive programs over time. Should the council decide not to establish the levy assessment, the currency draft fund will be depleted and future expenditures will have an impact on the general fund. A community meeting for the downtown business was held on August fifteenth and another one on October second. As of today, we had no objections to the levy assessment and therefore asked the recommendation for council to establish levy assessment as outlined in Exhibit E on the downtown businesses defined on Exhibit D. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Julian. And we'll now open the public hearing. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to make a comment?
John Warren, City of Series. I just had a couple of questions. I believe I was at the Planning Commission when this item first came up. And the cost for just the gardening service, the maintenance of the shrubbery and stuff down there, I think the contract was like $26,000 a year. And all the assessment district is going to assess is $10,000 a year. So it doesn't seem to balance. And the other thing that I remember is that this is voluntary only. Is that still the situation? The assessment, the payment, is it volunteer only?
Yes, the collection at this time is voluntary.
So establishing something that isn't collectible really isn't the way to do business. If you're going to have a tax or a levy or whatever you want to call it, an assessment district, then it should be mandatory. I have mandatory on my property taxes that I have to pay. I mean, if I don't pay them, there's some, there's some some problems are going to be developed. They'll come and take my property and sell it for the, for the, for the fees that are due. And so if you're going to establish something, there needs to be an enforcement, a way to collect the revenue that is due. You just ask for something voluntary, there's no need to take up the council's time, Board of Planning Commission's time and all that. If you're just going to go ask for somebody to put some money in a pot so you can have some money to pay the bills. So I think this needs to be approached differently so that it's meaningful for the businesses down there and also for the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. Julian, just a quick question. How, how many businesses have been actually paying versus not? Have you been successful, or is it been a communication issue with new businesses coming in?
Yes.
They not know about it?
I don't know the number, the top, the number at the top of my head, but what was happening in the past was with the previous vendor, they were not collecting any of the assessments on new businesses in the downtown area, so we lost a lot of that assessment in the prior years. We have now switched to HDL, who's working, will be working with us to also do the levy assessment if approved, and we'll also do the collection for those in, for those businesses downtown that have not paid or that failed to pay, they will help us in doing those collections.
Okay.
We met on the third. We have a very strong, there was a couple of businesses that came in. They are actually requesting in future to actually increase the levy assessment. They felt that the $10 a month was too little for what they would like to establish for downtown. So we have the support of the businesses downtown. We are not asking to raise the levy at this time. It's been the same for several, several years. I believe in the future that the downtown, once we get it established again, that they would come back and request an increase. But there is a good team working together now so that we can get this levy back up to where it used to be.
Okay, if you think it's valuable, maybe come back in, in the beginning of the next year to give us an update on how it all went.
Yes, we'll do with my annual report in January.
That'd be great. Thank you, Julian. Is there any additional comments and or questions from the audience? Seeing none. Any hands raised? Okay, thank you very much. We'll now close the public hearing. Any comments and or questions from the council? Serena?
Thank you, Mayor. Julian, I do have a few questions. How many businesses are in that downtown area?
I believe there's approximately 50, give or take a few. That includes Home Oc in that area.
Okay. And I noticed, so you did have meetings. It looks like you had one via Teams or you had one in person.
Correct.
Virtual. There was a public hearing notice for an August 27 hearing. And then the notice for today, right? Was that, were those notices in the Courier?
That is correct. They're both in the Courier and all businesses downtown received a mailer.
Okay.
Each received mailing and then an email from, from my office.
Okay. I guess, how many showed up to the meetings, do you recall?
So on the Teams meeting, there was three, which are the three, TID, I believe was one of them. And then two small businesses. And then on October, there was four.
Okay.
And that is the pattern of individuals that attend. We've gone down and hand-delivered invitations personally. We mail them. We send the email. We follow up. And we will get maybe five or six. This last meeting that we held, they were brand new small businesses in downtown. They're actually looking to take the lead to help all the other businesses come together. In the past, it's been very forgetful. But I think with the team that we're creating in the future, that it's going to be us driving downtown again.
Okay. And have you spoke to any of these businesses, like made just phone calls to them and ask them, you know, is a better meeting time? Is there a better meeting time for you? Or, I mean, kind of what's their, I guess, why aren't they really attending these meetings? What kind of comments are you getting?
It's, they forget. They don't have enough staff to, to leave their business. A lot of them don't live in series, so they're outside residents coming in, have businesses here. So to leave and then come back for an evening. We've looked at having day meetings during noon time. We've, you know, which was the team meeting was during the lunch hour. We've tried, Thursday seems to be the best evening. In the past, we've had up to 10 show up at one time. It's just consistency, I think, is the, is the game here, is as long as we keep one day consistent. And, you know, other than providing dinner for everybody, I don't know what the incentive would be to show up. It is for them. That's why it went back to the Planning Commission as the board because there wasn't a strong support. But they're paying. They pay the levies. They, they let it, you know, over time, we have a lot of businesses that pay. There's very few that, you know, we don't, we do have a lot of nonprofits downtown that are not obligated to participate in the levy.
So I do appreciate all your effort that you're putting in to try to get, you know, these businesses to show up. I just, I don't know how it's going to be fair that they can pick and choose when they want to pay, especially if we have like the landscape contract, you know, that that fund may not have enough money for. But one of the other things that I did notice is in the staff reports, it talks about the existing policy and the relationship to the strategic plan. And that is the plan from 2013 to 2020. And that's why I keep saying we have to get that updated because I feel like maybe in the economic development world did things change, you know, after COVID? So I mean, I just, is there other things that we can improve on before we move forward and start collecting the levies again? I feel like we should have more discussion about that.
Thank you, councilmember. Anybody else have any comments or questions? Mr. Casey, go ahead.
You'd think that Serena and I talk before meetings, but I, I agree, we should take a look at what's going on. If you have four people, three people at these meetings, we, we, we need to improve that communications. And the little bit of contact I have with businesses in that area, without exception, those that aren't paying, don't plan on paying. They don't see a benefit. I think we should study it a little bit more. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Is there, we already went out to the public on this, right? Yes, I believe so. Okay. You have a question? Go ahead. Go ahead, council.
Sorry, newbie, I do have a question for you. I have a possible referral and I'll just, I don't know if that would come now. It has to do with this. I don't know the history on the, on the Series Downtown Revitalization Area Board, but I know it's with the Planning Commission right now. Can we, can I make a referral to evaluate this and see if we should have a separate board who can maybe help with getting some of these businesses involved?
Let's save that for the referral section since technically it's not associated with the agendized items. But I think that's something you can bring forward tonight during.
Thank you.
Okay. So I can respond to the, on the, the board. Actually, if we do get the committee to get together from the cities or the businesses, they can come back and request to, to the council to create their, their board. Again, right now, the, the city council will have to sign the planning commission to be the board. But if we have the participation from the businesses, and that was something that we can bring back to council for that recommendation.
I'll make a referral later. Thank you.
Councilwoman, excuse me, Councilwoman Vera, go ahead.
Thank you. Julian, I guess I'm a little confused because I guess I thought they originally had a board if there was a certain amount of attendees. And if they don't have a board, then it was the Planning Commission. Is that not how it goes?
No. So the Planning Commission was established as the actual board because of the low attendance from the previous board that was established. And so the Planning Commission is the one that meets. I believe we do it every like three months when we do the CDRAP reports. And the, the Planning Commission is considered as the board.
But at some point, they had their onboard and they were.
Yes, they did. Yes.
Okay. And so that policy is still in place? Okay. So, okay. So it's just that we don't have enough attendees to actually make, form the board again?
I think what it was is the city council actually appointed the Planning Commission as the board because they're an established, established government that's there, that's constantly there because they meet twice a month. And so it was the, the meetings of the community would get together and then they would bring their concerns to the Series Revitalization Board, which is the Planning Commission. At the time, that was established by council. So once, I guess, the CDRAP community or the, the businesses becomes strong, then yes, then we can then bring it back to say, we've got a board now. Can we bring it back to the community?
Thank you.
Okay. So with this resolution, we would have to ask for a motion and were you going to make a comment, city manager?
If I can, real quick. So keep in mind, we're asking, you know, this was stopped last year. So right now, everything's coming and being paid for out of the general fund. So if we don't do anything tonight, then all, all the landscaping and everything is being paid for out of the general fund. It's not being paid for anybody else. And so that's why we're trying to get it restarted so that we can help pay for that and take off some of the weight of the general fund that we're already seeing.
I'll motion to approve item 14 on the agenda.
Looking for a second? I will second. Get a roll call, please.
Councilmember Casey?
No.
Councilmember Vera?
Yes.
Councilmember Otero?
No, I think we need further discussion.
Mayor Lopez?
Yes.
Motion fails two two.
Okay, moving on to discussion items. Item number 15 is a customer watering schedule update recommendation. Who will be doing this?
Mayor, I will.
You will? Okay. I figured, wasn't sure. What did it say on here? I'm sorry, it wasn't highlighted.
Yeah, no problem.
All right, I think we're ready. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I would like to provide you an update on the city water conservation effort and the new state requirements for urban water use. Back in 2009, the Water Conservation Act set as, set a goal for reducing urban water consumption by 20% by the year 2020. I'm pleased to report that by, by year 2020, the City of Series surpassed the target using just over 2,151 million gallons of water compared to the state target cap of 3,591 million gallons.
Okay, let's go ahead and go to recess and then once you guys resolve this issue, we'll come back.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And we are ready to start. If everybody could please take their seat. We are back.
All right, Mayor. I think we'll try it for the second time here. Good evening, councilmembers. I would like to provide you an update on the city water conservation effort and the new state requirements for urban water use. Back in 2009, the Water Conservation Act set a goal of reducing the urban water consumption by 20% by the year 2020. I'm pleased to report that by 2020, the City of Series surpassed that target using just over 2,151 million gallons of water compared to the state target cap of 3,591 million gallons. In 2020, during emergency drought restrictions, Governor Newsom asked Californians to voluntarily reduce the use by an additional 15%. While we were not able to reach that level, Series will manage to save an average of 2.5% between 2021 and 2024, about 54 million gallons per year. Since then, the state has satisfied, satisfied, no, the state has shifted away from the target base use and moved to what's called the objective base use. Senate Bill 606 and Assembly Bill 1668 created the firm work for making water conservation in California a way of life, which aims to create a more efficient and sustainable water management system in California. This includes tasking the State Water Resource Control Board and Department of Water Resources with determining standards for urban water use efficiency and how to calculate an objective to assess efficient water use. Under this program, urban water suppliers now calculate an urban water use objective. This number represents a volume of water a community would have to use if operating at a maximum efficiency. For fiscal year 2425, Series' actual water use is estimated at 1,921 million gallons. The urban water use for the same period was expected to be about 2,019 million gallons. That means we're roughly 98 million gallons under our efficiency objective, a cushion that gives us the flexibility for emergency and/or unexpected demand. However, if the third water day were added to our year-round watering schedule, we project an increase of nearly 97 million gallons per year. That will leave us with only about 1 million gallons of surplus. To put that into perspective, a single golf course can use a million gallons in one night of irrigation. That is equivalent to nearly one to two Olympic-sized swimming pools. It's also important to note that, beginning in 2027, if the water suppliers are not demonstrating compliance with the urban water use objective, the State Water Resource Control Board can issue monetary penalties of up to $1,000 per day. And also during the declared drought, that penalty rises significantly to about $10,000 per day. Given California moves forward to restrict the efficiency objective at the upcoming compliance deadlines and the potential of significant fines, staff does not recommend adding a third water day at this time. Our current cushion allows us to stay in compliance and prepare us for future reduction, which may require even greater conservation efforts in the years ahead. And that would conclude my presentation. I'm open for any questions.
Thank you very much. And we will now open this up to the public. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to make a comment on this item? Seeing none, any hands raised? I bring this item back to the council.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Real quick, this presentation was a response to a referral from...
That is correct, yes, I know that. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Sam, for the presentation. I do have a question. And bear with me while I try to ask this correctly. But I guess what determines our target usage to stay in compliance? Like, is that like per city or is it per residents?
I would ask Josh, maybe if you want to step up and kind of clarify that, the requirements by the State Water Board?
Good evening, Councilman, and Councilmember Otero. Yes, it's specific per city. So they take a look at, so now the state is compiling all of the different required reporting. So like our annual water audit, our drought and sustainability report that we do every month. They take all those numbers and they compile them together and they create an urban water use objective. So basically, they've done away with the target goals and they're individualizing the urban water use for each individual city. It's a working document. So as we are continually giving our annual, I mean, our monthly reports, they're adjusting that number. And so we don't know what the next year's number is going to be until this year is complete. And then they'll create a number for the following year. So what we did, like on our monthly reports, we started using last year's urban water use objective. We got rid of the 15% reduction number. And we've started comparing our current water use to our urban water use objective. And it's based off of percentages of how much water we use per month. So if you look like on the monthly report, it kind of shows us trending right along with it. But some months, we're just above it and some months, we're just below it. So we're right on the cusp of what that urban water use is.
Thank you. I do have one more, more of just a comment. So if, it looks like this presentation was kind of built around the annual usage. My suggestion is at least, what would it look like if we only add a third water day during the summer months? So maybe like June through August? I would like to see what that would look like if it's evaluated. I feel throughout the city, we do have, you know, I'll give you an example. In my district, we have sprinklers going off on dirt. So maybe that's getting to the trees, I don't know. In the areas that I've seen, there's no trees, there's no plants right now. So how do we kind of cut down on some of those areas within the city that we're wasting water and kind of give it back to the residents during the summertime and at least increase by one day during the summer?
I mean, our daily usage varies like between the summer and the winter. I mean, in the summertime, we use approximately about more than 5 million gallons a day. Where in the wintertime, it reduces to 3 million gallons a day. So there's less people irrigating during the wintertime. So I would recommend just to leave it the way it is. Because if we use it just for the summertime, I mean, our public outreach would be, I mean, we use a lot of staff effort trying to educate people not to use water at certain times. I mean, we're having a problem with leaf and limb where we brought it into the seasonal. Where, you know, after the season's over, we still have issues with leaf and limb being picked up. So I'm afraid that would be the same thing with water if we decided to do it like in the seasonal, just in the summertime, where people would use a third day to water and go back to the two days in the wintertime. So that would make it really challenging on our part.
So I guess what will happen eventually when we start building, not building, when we start planting some of the new trees? I mean, those are going to have to be watered and maintained, right? An increased city usage?
Well, that's correct. I mean, those new plants requires additional water just so that they could get established. However, I mean, we're talking about 1,300 trees that we're getting through this grant for us to water versus we have 11,000 accounts in water usage. So that would be a huge amount of water that need used for the 11,000 residents.
Thank you, Sam.
Welcome.
Councilmember Casey?
There's a city water monitor that goes in the parks.
What's that, Mr. Casey?
So, you know, at our house, we have a water meter that measures the amount of water. So when you're sprinkling water on the city parks and particularly the grass area around the water treatment plant, is that water monitored? Do you track that?
No, the city parks are, they have their own irrigation wells. They're not part of the potable water system.
So what's watered at Smyrna Park is not part of the...
No, that's being pulled out of the ground, but that's dedicated, that's irrigation wells. Those are not potable wells that we use for drinking.
Okay, and then the other question I have, you talk about fines coming up. Presently, isn't there a fine already for commercial property that don't have, if they don't have trees or shrubs, using water?
On commercial properties, Mr. Casey, you should have an irrigation meter.
Yeah.
And you should have...
Yeah, I guess you didn't understand my question. So if you have a commercial property, when our state came in with all these rules, if they don't have trees, they can't water grass. Isn't that, that's a state law. That's what I understand is a state law. And what I've asked that it be enforced, I don't get any kind of answer. But you're already, you're talking about fines in the future if we don't do things right. And my question is, do we monitor commercial property being watered with city water that don't have trees?
Well, it's a state law. I think that the law was stricter when the drought wasn't enforced by the state. And right now, that restriction has been lifted. So you would be able to water the trees and the laws for the commercial properties. I don't think that's an issue at this point.
Okay, so that law's been changed and it's not enforced anymore?
Yeah, I have to go back and look at that law, Mr. Casey. I don't know it offhand.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Otero?
Sorry, that just brought me to one more question, Sam. For the commercial properties, is there water metered as well? Like the residents?
Yes, they are.
Thank you.
Any additional comments or questions from the council? And this item was strict, oh, go ahead, Mr. Casey.
Serena, there's two meters. There's the regular meter that goes into the building. Then there's another meter that's for the outside. So there's two meters.
Thank you very much. This item was for discussion only and no action needs to be taken. Is there anything additional you would like to mention, Councilwoman, in regards to your item? Okay, I just wanted to make sure before we moved on. Thank you very much. So we are now moving on to council member referrals. And we had to remove item number 16 because that was requested by Vice Mayor. Moving on to item number 17, that's landscaping services. And this was also requested by Councilmember Otero. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just really quickly, on July 11th, I had started a discussion with City Manager and Sam, our Public Works Director, about my concerns with the landscape contract and just the company possibly not doing what we expect. So the conversation continued through September. And I'm still having some concerns. And I think even tonight, as we talked about the downtown landscape and fees, I'd like to see us review the landscape service contracts and possibly find a company that can service our entire city and not just specific areas, separate the contracts from downtown to the residential areas. For me, it's important that our residents are getting a clean and maintained city. So my recommendation is that we have a presentation brought forward about the landscape services and everything that is expected for these contractors.
Thank you very much. And we have Councilwoman Vera.
Thank you, Serena. I think I've also brought up the same issue because I see on Morgan Road that they were not cutting them. It looks like they're cutting it maybe every six months to a year. So I also have brought up concerns, at least with Doug, about my concerns with the landscaping services that are also being not completed. And I've also shown pictures, I think, I don't know if they got to you. I know I sent them to Doug, of weeds that are taller than me over at some of the parks. And one of them, they completely covered a garbage can. So those are kind of concerns for me. So I agree, I'm completely with the terror. I've had the same issues that I've been seeing that are very visible on my side of town as well.
Yeah, I want to say I share the same concerns as both of you ladies. I think that it's important that we review that contract and possibly look at some alternatives. And the recommendation of possibly going, using those contractors for the entire city might even help staff members that are overwhelmed with work. So I think that, and then obviously, this item is strictly for consensus.
Mayor, can I say one thing about the contract? I know it's a major concern. We've been discussing issues with the contractors lately. I know Councilmember Otero was bringing this up. And I thought about it, yes, this morning. I reached out to the second lowest bidder and asked them if they would honor their proposal that they submitted back in July. And they said yes. So I'm thinking of working on some kind of a, terminating the agreement with the vendor that we have currently. And maybe give the chance for the second bidder to go ahead and take that test on. So this is something that I think to discuss with Doug and see if that would be the right approach.
Definitely. And the report, would you be able to bring forward the cost differences as well? Because that's obviously going to hit our general fund or reserves.
Yeah, the cost difference between the two bids were extremely low. I mean, we're talking about $2,000 a month.
Okay, unless, is there any other additional comments from the council? We'll go out to the public. Is anybody from the public that would like to make a comment on this item? Seeing none? Looks like I'm asking for consensus from the council. Thumbs up, I'm okay here. Mr. Casey, sir? He says no, okay, thank you very much. And moving on to item number 18, this is my request, Public Information Officer position with the City of Series should explore creating a Public Information Officer, PIO, position. As our city continues to grow communication with residents, businesses, and the media has become increasingly important, a Public Information Officer, PIO, will serve as a dedicated point of contact to ensure our message is clear, consistent, and proactive. A PIO helps bridge the gap between city government and the public in sharing accurate and updated information on projects, emergencies, communication programs. And this position would also help straighten our transparency, promote positive stories about Series, and respond quickly to misinformation or media requests. And also during emergencies, a PIO becomes essential, coordinating timely updates across departments to so residents know what's happening and where to get help. In day-to-day operations, a PIO would work with the city staff, the city manager, and the council to highlight accomplishments, share resources, and improve public trust. Exploring this role doesn't necessarily mean committing to a new full-time position immediately. It's about assessing options, whether the responsibility can be shared among existing staff contracted out or phases as a part of a long-term communication strategy. And in short, the PIO helps tell us the story of the City of Series, keeping the public informed and strengthens the connection between City Hall and the community we serve. I think this would be a great opportunity to explore some of these options. And I'm looking for consensus from my council members and/or any questions.
Can I...
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
Ask a clarifying question? Public, just the title, Public Information Officer, that's not, you're asking more for someone like, kind of like a social, maybe not a social media coordinator, but like a public engagement type person? Or like a Public Information Officer that's hired under the police department?
Public Information Officer that would address all the items that I had listed. And that could also include social media. I mean, I think that all of our departments already do a good job with good information across the board. But having somebody in that position who can actually dedicate the time and get all this information on one platform and also deal with issues that we've had in the past with public information that we put out to the public. And I think that we should explore either a contract, maybe a position, or anything of that sort. So not one specific thing, but I think we should at least have the staff to have an opportunity to give us some options. I think I would be open for that.
All right, thanks for clarifying.
Thank you. Councilwoman Vera?
Thank you. I think my only concerns are, again, it's going to come down to funding. If we're able to utilize current staff or at least see if that's an option, I'm okay with that when it comes to hiring. If we have a hiring freeze with our own police code enforcement, we're looking at even... If we have a hiring freeze with our own police code enforcement, we're looking at even planning, we're struggling to keep it staffed. I, I don't know if I necessarily think that this is a, the highest priority when it comes to hiring, um, staff, when it comes to the city of Series with our current financial situation and the staffing priorities that I think we have within the city. That's kind of where I'm at on this.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Casey?
I, I agree with the councilperson, Vera. You know, recently, I, I asked somebody at where I work, uh, to make a call and ask a question for clarification. So they call the city, and the recording says, due to staffing shortages, we don't have anyone who can answer the phone. Uh, and these are the choices, and so they push the choice, and ring, and ring, and ring, and ring, and ring, and then they hung up. So, yeah, we have to do something, but I'm not sure hiring a new person is the answer. Thank you.
Yeah, I did mention that would be one of the options, a contractor, maybe use licensed staffs, or if, maybe if you guys would at least consider the information to be brought back to the council and to make a final decision. That's really what I'm asking for today. Any comments from the public?
John Warren, City of Series. Public Information Officer that is familiar with all of the workings of the city of Series is a full-time position. Someone to come on board, to familiarize themselves with what goes on in public works, what goes on in engineering, what goes on with council members and, and, and the things that they're doing, would require somebody with a lot of skills. And to find that person out there is going to probably cost $100,000 a year minimum salary. The city can't afford $200,000 more, because when you pay a person 100 grand, the backend of it with all the benefits and everything is another 100 grand. So we're not in a position to do that when we don't even have a community development director who's in that price category. So this is a great idea. If you can find somebody on staff currently being paid $50,000 a year to do their job and add this to it, might be a bit much. So using PIOs from the bar department, using PIOs from the police department, who have these people available now and understand the workings of the city, might be a better option. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Anybody online? I bring this item back for consensus from left to right.
Yeah, Mayor, I think we should consider it. Um, just one last comment. I don't know that we'll have the funding this fiscal year, but I think because we need to plan for next year, it's something that we should get a staff report on.
I believe that's, I think that's the common sense way to approach it. Thank you very much. Um, I'm okay with it, council members?
I guess I'm happy to look at the information as long as it doesn't attach to our reserves, because I think we have higher priority if we're hiring outside. I just think there's higher priorities, um, other than this position. But, I mean, if you can find someone internal without additional costs to the city, then I'm happy to consider it.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Mr. Casey? Okay, thank you very much. You got consensus. And we will now actually ask for, see if there's any additional referrals. And whoa, Christmas trees today. We ain't even in Christmas yet. Uh, Councilwoman Otero, go ahead.
So just back to earlier, um, my suggestion is I'd like to bring the referral of a Series Downtown Revitalization Area Board, be separate from the Planning Commission.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Vera?
Um, trying to figure out how to put this. I guess I've been encountering some problems with the transition with the new company with the business licensing and the quarterly taxes. And despite my efforts to try to resolve this, I seem to encounter repeated barriers. And it sounds like so there was some changes that may not have been applied to our municipal code, but were implemented during the last recession, and we've been following that practice. So it sounds like now we're changing what we've been doing for 10 to 15 years. So I just think that we need to look at that, and if that's the case, we need to update our ordinances and policies so that we were being consistent and transparent with our businesses, and we're not changing things midway, one or two decades later, can, um, compared to where they've been. Um, it just looks like there's some concerns with transparency, some of the concerns I have regarding records and payments being handled during this transition. And I just want to make sure that, um, there's been no funds that have been misdirected or lost during this process, and just making sure that we're staying consistent with policies and procedures that have been in place for well over a decade here in the city. And if we need to update our, uh, policies and ordinances, then that's what we need to do, because I just don't necessarily, I want to see how we could address some of these issues while protecting our business owners and the city at the same time.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Casey?
Sure. So, uh, I think we need to have, uh, a study of our, and I always, the food vendors, I don't know. Uh, we did a survey, I asked some people to do, you know, that use them regularly, and without exception, uh, the ones that they use regularly, even though it's processed food, they, they collect no sales tax. So I'm not sure if they're, like the furniture stores during Christmas time, you don't pay sales tax, they pay it. I'm not sure what, how that's being handled, but I think, uh, it's something that, I don't know if it's a referral, but we need to look into it. The, uh, we, we also need, we, we are scheduled, I think, sometime in January to have an update on our audit process, and I think that we should have it written in, in, um, concrete, so to speak, that we have an update quarterly of where we are financially. It's no secret that we're, uh, we're dipping into our, uh, reserves, and, uh, I'm, I'm only on, right now, my term expires next, uh, December, but, but the way we're headed, uh, we, we may not, we just need to do something sooner than not. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You guys got that?
No.
Go ahead, and if you have any questions for Mr. Casey, or who?
Collecting those sales tax on food vendors. You want us to do a presentation or study on that, or, or what do you want exactly to turn?
Well, I just want you to collect the sales tax. I don't care how you do it.
But your referral, what do you want us to bring back to you?
The referral would be that you have your code enforcement people audit every food vendor, whether they're selling ice cream, which is not taxable, make sure every one of them have a tax ID number, and then give that to your tracking people and have a quarterly report of the sales tax that's collected. That's my referral.
Got it? Right, thank you very much. There's no additional referrals. We will now move on to reports. I have nothing to report. Uh, Councilmember Vera?
Thank you, Mayor. So this month, the, um, Stanslos Homeless Alliance meeting was actually canceled, and most of us were down south, a lot of, a lot of the electeds were down south at the League of Cities. Um, there have been some questions regarding the Salvation Army or the Barbarian Shelter. They, there are some changes in federal and state funding, which is affecting the homeless shelter in Mesto. Currently, they did give six-month notice to Salvation Army, but they currently are working on trying to find money. They do have money currently, um, allocated through April to sustain it. The county is looking at other possibilities, such as going back to using, um, the mental, I can't even think of what they're called right now, um, when it comes to behavioral health, which is what they did before, the only situation we had with that before. And again, we haven't had ongoing discussions with this yet. I expect at the next meeting, um, is that before, if you weren't addicted to something or, um, on a behavioral health, you weren't eligible for services. So that does leave that leap, um, hole again, if they move back to that again. Um, I was able to attend, when it comes to small businesses, um, the search girl max insurance center ribbon cutting, which is in my district. I'm really happy to see businesses opening in my district, and I wish them the continued success. Looks like they've had people out there every day when I drive by, so I'm happy to see that. Um, I also want to thank the fire for allowing me to spend most, almost all of my day yesterday. I think I was there nine hours yesterday, um, just going out with calls. They actually did some drills with me. Um, I finally got to hold that hose that Serena actually did a few weeks ago and realized that is similar to holding an entire adult person. It's totally different than a bag of potatoes or a small child. So that hose, when it's turned on, has definitely got some power to it. Um, but I do appreciate and want to sincerely thank them for the time and effort and the warm hospitality. I was definitely impressed with, um, his cooking. Um, they have family meals together, so we actually had breakfast and dinner together, which was really kind of great, as long as they weren't interrupted by the bells and the sirens. Um, it did go quite well, so I wanted to thank them. Although there were no active fires, um, we were able to participate in some regular training, which they do have to do, which is similar to our regular police department. Um, each month, they also have to complete that. So, um, I could tell you firsthand that it was definitely an experience. Um, we did have a fake fire, and the instincts took over, and I got to watch them, how they worked as a team with their knowledge, and they demonstrated their skill, and I really have a deep appreciation for what they have to go through. Um, as for Halloween, I know there's some schools that are hosting some trick-or-treat or trick-or-trunks. Um, in my district, there is one at PKB. They're going to be having one this week. Um, it is just outside, it's in our sphere of influence, which is on my side of town, and I'm happy to say I'll be there. This weekend, we also have the one here, City of Series is hosting on Saturday. I hope you guys will come out, um, and spend some time and have a safe festive event and celebrate the season together again. And then on that side note, I know the mayor had shared this, um, online earlier this week, as well as the economic development. Uh, we will have the Chick-fil-A mobile food truck, I believe, from my understanding. So I'm happy, although we don't have a permanent location here in Series yet, it just sounds like a fun festive event, um, especially for all you chicken lovers in the community. I have not been able to confirm if this truck does have gluten-free. I know their stores do, because my granddaughter can eat there. So that is just my only question, because gluten-free is, my granddaughter has celiac disease, and there's very few places that we can actually eat and enjoy, um, gluten-free items, and it happens to be Chick-fil-A, and my daughter does actually drive to Manteca for my granddaughter. Um, with that said, the mayor didn't have any comments. I was really surprised. He didn't bring up the crosstown parade coming up on October 25th. It'll be here at 10:00 AM over at Whitmore Park. Elementary school students are encouraged to dress in costume. It's always a great event, and it could be that him and I are cheering for the same team. That's probably why he didn't bring it up, um, because we don't have our, no one wearing red in here today. But, as most of you know, all four of my children and my nephew attended Central Valley. The mayor was actually my son and my nephew's football coach, I believe. Um, so we are definitely supporting the Hawks. And, um, for those of you who are not aware of the game, the game is on Thursday, October 30th at 7:00 PM. Mayor can probably give you more details on all of that. Um, my child is a little out of high school now, but it's a great opportunity to come out, support our local children, support our community, and just show great community spirit with our community rival game that we have every year. Now, the last thing, I'm almost done, I know I like to talk. Um, the weather, as you can tell outside, we're starting to get rain. Um, the weather's changing for fall, which is exciting for those of us who enjoy fall and not sickly thrilled with summer, but I'm happy to see the rainfall is here. We are expecting possibly up to an inch of rain, so I just want to remind everyone to allow extra time for travel and drive cautiously, especially with some of the delays you're seeing on Hatch Road now. You're going to see them if there's more accidents, but with this significant amount of rain this season, it also brings a lot of the oil and roadway residue to the surface, creating slippery conditions. So please take your time and stay safe on the roads. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vera, I have some good news for you. We will have an agenda item on the football game on the 27th. I did not forget, and I'm sure that everybody hears, yeah, and the parade obviously is the Saturday before, but she got me covered, so we're good. Um, so we'll have plenty of opportunity to discuss it then. And now we'll go to, uh, Councilwoman Serena Otero.
Thank you. Uh, just really quick, I just want to thank Mesto Fire again for, um, having me at the Fire Ops 101. It was a fantastic experience, and it was very eye-opening, um, and I gained a better understanding of the work that our firefighters do. So thank you for that. Um, and then also, I, again, I talked a lot about landscape, and although we have room for improvement, thank you, Sam, for continuing to have conversations with me, and, um, I know Doug's had him, and then Josh, when you were gone, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Casey?
Sure. I had the opportunity to go to the, uh, Series Scholarship Foundation for the, uh, Series Unified School District, and it was, uh, it was a special thing to see the, the students that had gone through Series, both at Series High and Central Valley, and got scholarships, and, and it was just a rewarding thing to see how the community can support children in the community. And also, uh, October is the, uh, the month to respect life, so I just want to remind everybody of that. October is the month to respect life. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City Manager?
Nothing to report.
City Attorney?
Nothing to report tonight.
Let's go to our departments from left to right. Stole your thunder. You know, I would, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a request for you to re-elaborate what she said.
Would you like to go into more details about the trick-or-trunks?
No, I just want to invite all you guys for next, for this weekend coming up. We have our, um, trunk-or-tree event. We've gone a little bigger this year. You'll be very impressed with the, some of the items that we have coming. And then also, Julian has got, um, Chick-fil-A coming out, um, so local businesses and, you know, people that want Chick-fil-A come and support them, so we have one here. So we're excited about that. And then the following weekend is our showdown parade. And I won't go any, any further, because there's four more events after that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Want to touch on the senior events, because you have a senior Halloween and another's, two senior events this month, correct?
Yeah, so we, we do have our Halloween event with the seniors that are coming up to, um, October 31st. Um, and then also, our, uh, Senior Harvest Event is also this, uh, Wednesday from 11:00 to 12:00. And that's been, um, we started off with 50, we're up close to 100 residents of seniors giving out food and, um, really enjoying it. So it's, it's a great program for everyone.
Joe, I was going to ask you, there, there is a bin out there for people to drop off candy, correct?
Yes.
How has that been? Has it been successful?
No, we're, we're trying.
Oh.
We, we do have one, um, one person that's been donating, but I won't mention the name, but it's greatly appreciated, um, what he donates every year for the past, uh, several years.
Might be having to go to Walmart, everyone, and go get some candy. Anyways, thank you very much. Anybody else? Onto our right-hand side? Any comments? Okay. Well, with that being said, um, thank you very much, and we will now go into closed session for conference with legal counsel exiting litigation, California Government Code 54956.9. Name of the case, Rafid Kohshihaba and Toh One Incorporated versus City of Series, Tennesseaux County Superior Court, case number CV24005948. In addition to another conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation, California Code 54956, for one potential case. If there's anybody in the public that would like to make a comment on this regarding the closed session? Okay, thank you, everybody, and have a wonderful evening, and God bless.